Step to the hallway, that's so the meeting will not be disrupted. The consent calendar. Items one through eight have been placed on the consent calendar and may be approved as a group. Action will be taken on the consent items in accordance with staff recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed by this, from the consent calendar by a planning commissioner, staff member, audience member for separate consideration at this time. The finding of this planning commission are recommendations to the city council. The city council will make the final decision with the exception of the following item, item four, fourteen UR zero one seven. The Rapid City Planning Commission's item, actions on these items are final unless any party appeals the decision to the Rapid City Council. All appeals must be submitted in writing to the planning, excuse me, to the Community Planning and Development Services Department by the close of business on the seventh full calendar day following action by the planning commission. Are there any items one through eight that staff would like removed?
Item number six, please.
Are there any items one through eight that planning commission members would like removed? Are there any items one through eight that audience member would like removed? The chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent items one through five and item seven and eight in accordance with staff recommendations. Tim made the motion. Second by Karen. To approve items one through five and seven and eight. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed. Motion passed. Item number seven. Excuse me, six.
Good morning. Item number six is the 2015 through 2018 Transportation Improvement Program Final Report. The Transportation Improvement Program is a four-year document that details all of our upcoming transportation projects and the, and the funding associated with them. The reason we pulled this from consent is the DOT has done a slight change in their, or their section of our Transportation Improvement Program. The Mount Rushmore Road Program has been broken up in, or Reconstruction Program has been broken up into three different phases. Phase one, which we'll call the South Phase, goes from Tower Road north to Florman Street. Second phase, which we call the Middle Phase, goes from north from Florman Street to Saint James Street, and then the third phase, the Northern Phase, goes from Saint James up to Kansas City Street. Due to a slight delay in their bid letting process, the first phase, which is Phase One, South Phase, from Tower Road to Florman Street, has been slightly delayed. It will still get under construction in 2015, but will probably extend somewhat into 2016. And because of that, the DOT has flip-flopped the Middle Phase and the Northern Phase. So then the Northern Phase will actually take place in 2016, and the Middle Phase will take place in 2016. And the main reason for that is it simplifies the traffic control between the two phases. When you have the middle and southern phases bumping up against each other, that leads to some traffic control challenges. And it also helps with the utility constructibility according to our Public Works Department. So that's the only change in there. It changes the funding totals for sixteen and seventeen, changes the charts, things like that, but not a major, major change. And I can answer any questions.
Are there any questions? If not, Karen made the motion to approve item six. Tim seconded the motion. All those in favor, please say aye to, at this time. Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Regular agenda items. Number nine.
Good morning. Item number nine is a final plan development to allow residential multifamily development. It's located, I'll take you through some slides. Property Zoned Office Commercial District. It's located at the northeast intersection of Bernice Street and Neal Street. In January, the planning commission approved an initial plan development for two apartment buildings with, and granted an exception for height. The applicant is coming in for the final plan development so that they can move ahead with getting a building permit. Layout of the proposed apartments. Parking's being provided on the lot to the, on the opposite side of the road. Planning Commission has also approved a plan development for apartments, and they're currently under construction. I'll get you, show you some slides or some pictures of that. Elevation of the proposed apartments. This is looking into the site and to the east along Bernice. And this is south from the property, looking into the property and to the north. These are the apartments going up on the property to the west and looking towards the intersection of Elk Vale and Don's Valley Market in that area. Staff recommends that the final plan development be approved with the stipulations as noted in the staff report. Are there any questions for staff at this time?
Any questions? If not, I'd accept the motion. Tim made the motion, and Kay seconded the motion to approve item number nine. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion passed. Item number ten.
Good morning. The item for you today is an ordinance amendment to amend Chapter sixteen point zero four point zero nine zero of the subdivision regulations. And what we're doing today is moving a resolution language into our ordinance so that it's law instead of a resolution. Back in nineteen eighty-three, the council adopted a resolution that said that anybody who wants to plat adjacent to the city limits needs to annex before that plat moves forward. And what this action does, again, it moves it from a resolution, which is sort of a policy, into city law. So with that, we do recommend approval of the item before you. Do you have any questions?
Karen?
Forget that part. I don't have any questions, Patsy, but I just want to say that I think this is a very good idea because it gives the public an opportunity to see not just us, when it's a resolution, it's kind of an in-house thing, and, and I think it's a surprise to people. But once you put it in ordinance, then people have that, that opportunity to see what's going on and know the rules. So thank you for doing this.
Thank you. I'd entertain a motion now. Motion was made by Karen and seconded by Tim to approve item number nine. All those in favor, please say aye. Tim, excuse me, I missed. Motion passed. Item number eleven.
Thank you. Item number eleven is fourteen PD eighteen, a major amendment to the plan development to expand an existing hospital. Approximately seven point six six acres of property located two sixteen Anamosa Drive. This is the location of the existing Rapid City Surgical Center. Let me take you through some slides. Here's a zoning map in vicinity of the areas. You can see the surgical center and surrounding medical campus is Zoned Office Commercial District in the planned development with a mix of office commercial district, low-density residential district, and medium-density residential district in all directions. An aerial view of the property, just for your consideration and knowledge, based on this aerial view, the areas of proposed expansion are going to be located here and here. Just so you can take that into consideration as we go through the rest of these. This is a, kind of a floor plan layout. North is actually in this direction. But here is the proposed expansions there, and then it'll be here as well. Site layout, Fifth Street and Anna Maria Drive. There, the applicant is proposing to develop this expansion, total of four phases. The first three phases are located here, or the first phase is located there, the second phase here, and the third phase is located here, essentially a new entryway. The fourth phase consists of internal remodeling. Two keyboards up here. View of the property, with the sign posted on the property. Portions of the expansion to be located is, in this picture, just to the right behind the sign. Look at Fifth Street to the north, Fifth Street south, and Anna Maria Drive, looking from Fifth and Anna Maria up the hill towards the surgical center. So look at the property where portions of the first, second phases are being proposed to be constructed. Also, you can see on the right side of the picture there, the separation between the Black Hills Surgical Center campus and residences to the, to the north structure. The proposed expansions are going to be located in, in this area. A look at that same portion of the building. If you note here, there's a substantial elevation difference between the level of the parking lot here and the base elevation for the structure down here, back behind this truck. This accounts for the proposed three-story height. Should be noted here that no portions of the proposed expansion are going to be greater in height than what is existing there today. And that, you know, as staff reviewed this item, we took into account some of the considerations in the past for this plan development, one of which being sound control for some of the heating, venting, and air conditioning units that are located on the property. We should also note here that no additional, and no rooftop units are being proposed as a part of this expansion. This'll look at the, the western portion of the property where additional expansion will be occurring. In this instance, this is to be a two-story expansion at the end of the building there in this portion of the parking lot. You can see some of the landscaping that's been installed to the north and west of the, the property to provide some buffering. And also here, please note, this is a piece of the HVAC equipment that we discussed earlier. You can see that there's been measures taken to acoustically control the sound that comes off of that equipment from the neighboring residences to the north and to the west. We should note that, again, no additional equipment is being proposed as a part of this development. In fact, the applicant has stated that, that the existing equipment will be replaced with better sound-controlling equipment in the future, and that none of these units will be placed on the rooftops. As for architectural style, the building, or the proposed additions, will match or resemble the architectural style of the existing structure. This is one more view from the intersection of Anna Maria and Alta Vista Drive, looking kind of north and to the east, so you can see the relationship of the surgical center to the residences located to the west. Based on the applicant's operation plan, and their efforts to control, or the, to maintain the, the similar heights of the buildings that exist today, their efforts to maintain acoustic control over the HVAC equipment, and their efforts to maintain the landscaping based on, or, to use as a buffer around the property, staff is recommending that this application be approved with the stipulations outlined in the staff report. Staff is available for questions at this time.
Any questions? We did receive one letter, and that was from Dale and Lena Grimm, and they're, they're, they just wanted to be assured of the things that you were talking about. One was limiting the height of the complex, no more to the current height. I'm summarizing this now, I'm not reading the entire letter. That noise control with the addition of sound barriers be considered, and maintenance of the property behind and alongside the complex be maintained. And so I just wanted to acknowledge this letter, and you did answer those questions in your presentation, so thank you. I'd entertain a motion now. Yep. John.
It is. Yes, and let me show you that on the site plan. Yes, John, thank you. I should also point out that you're right, the expansion on the northeast portion of the building will take up existing parking. However, they are utilizing this parking lot as a part of their parking to kind of provide parking, not just for the surgical center, but for the imaging center as well. They are required to have a total of, if you give me just a moment, two hundred and seventy-two parking spaces. They are providing well over three hundred, three hundred and eighty-one parking spaces.
Karen.
Thank you. There's a couple other questions that I forgot to ask you, Rob. Since we don't get elevations, you know, they're not required, the side that's on Fifth Street, is it, the elevation going to the top of the first building area, or is it going to that little pergola type, or that other little piece that sticks out? The height, I just want to know what the height is.
I can have John Robideau, the architect for this project, address that. Jason, sorry, Jason.
Yeah, Karen.
Jason, would you like to identify yourself?
Yeah, Jason Robideau with Williams and Associates Architecture.
Thank you.
The height of the addition and a little expansion over the top will be to the height of that, the taller, what is now a mechanical penthouse area. So it matches the height of that tallest portion of that building.
Okay. Thank you. That's, that's kind of what I wanted to know. So it'll go clear across the front of that, up to that height?
Well, it'll go above, if I could figure out how to draw here. Roughly speaking, it'll go in this area.
Knuckles on the screen.
Sorry. It'll match that there. The actual addition over here in this phase will be a little bit lower.
Okay. That's helpful. At least I'll know what it looks like when I drive by and what.
Yeah, so from a massing point of view, we tried to match almost everything that was there. On the other end of the building, the roof profile and everything just matches up with the, with the existing roof.
Okay.
It's more of a pitched roof on the other end.
Gotcha. Then can I ask you another question since you're at the mic? The landscaping that you're going to do, based on the letter that was provided, if there's maintenance, replacement trees, are you going to be able to do that too?
Yeah, I believe that, I mean, there's more than enough landscape points that are already there. We went kind of above and beyond, and, you know, the Black Hills Surgical Hospital's been more than happy to continue to maintain and add, you know, landscaping as required up along those residential lands. So yes.
Okay. And I read in the staff report that there is not going to be any emergency services, so there won't be any sirens going through there?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
For those of you who remember this back in two thousand and two, when this development first came forward, there was a lot of neighborhood input regarding the noise handling equipment that originally was on the roof of the, of the building. We worked well with Black Hills Surgery Center. They have redesigned that and put in some acoustical controls for that. When we looked at this application, one of the things that we wanted to ensure was that whatever did come forward did not create any additional noise from what they have today. And the information that they have submitted indicates that they are meeting those requirements. Also, when we looked at this expansion, that, that's to the west with the two-story on the, on that side of the building, we did note that Black Hills Surgery Center has purchased some of those lots adjacent to this property, and that does help mitigate some of the conflict between the residential development and the hospital being so close and directly adjacent to those established residences. When we look at the addition on the east side, or that that's closest to Fifth Street, the one-story addition is that that will be most visible to the homes to the north. There is a wide open space that actually serves as a drainage area that provides a significant buffer. We had a previous amendment come forward several years ago that did allow the parking that's down south and adjacent to Fifth Street to be used and counted for this development. It is a significant distance away, but that is where primarily the employees then would park. So looking at the facility, seeing what concerns we have known about from the onset of it, I think they've done a really good job with this plan, trying to ensure to the neighborhood that they will continue to be a good neighbor, and that the design that we see today on that building will be expanded as a part of this expansion.
Thank you. John. Okay. Thank you. I'd entertain a motion now. Tim made the motion, and Karen seconded the motion to approve item number eleven. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion passed. Item number twelve.
Item number twelve is a final plan development submitted by the Parks and Recreation Department for one hundred and eighty-four acres of land in the Skyline Wilderness area. In particular, here's an aerial showing unhatched all the properties that run along Skyline that are city-owned and part of the Skyline Wilderness area. Aerial showing that most of it is undeveloped, as should be, and here we have the location of what the Parks Department is proposing. First, at the Dinosaur Park parking lot, they'll be doing some revisions to the parking lot area, including creating spaces for vehicle, or RVs and bus parking, as well as increasing pedestrian crossing movements. At the West Fulton parking lot trailhead, or West Dinosaur parking lot trailhead, which will be accessed off of Jackson and West Fulton, they're proposing ten, to pave ten parking spaces and have a future restroom facility there. At the Petrified Forest parking lot trailhead, there's today an existing gravel parking area on the shoulder that will be paved and, with nine parking spaces. And then to the south, the stone wall overlooked parking lot trailhead, Skyline Drive will actually be straightened out in that area, and in the bend will be constructed twenty-three parking spaces and a restroom facility. In addition, the Parks Department is doing a variety of hiking and biking trails throughout the Skyline Wilderness area and will be making those improvements. Parks Department has indicated that there will be, if, with approval and then funding, they'll be getting started in 2015. This is what the Dinosaur Park parking area, the RV and bus parking, long pad along the, the road, and then putting in some planting, planter islands, make the place look a little bit nicer. This is the, I believe, the Petrified Forest parking lot area, so it'll be paved rather than the gravel area it is today, and that was nine parking spaces. This is the parking located off of West Fulton Street. The West Dinosaur with ten parking spaces and a future restroom facility. And then the stone wall overlooked parking lot area where Skyline will be straightened out, and then in that existing curve will be twenty-three parking spaces and a restroom area. Just showing the locations of the project, an elevation of the proposed restroom facilities. Here's looking up at Dinosaur Park from the parking lot and looking into the parking lot area, which is existing, and they'll be putting in the, the planter islands in this area. Looking south along Skyline Drive at the existing area where there will be, now be RV and bus parking pads, and looking at the pedestrian crossing facility as it is today and to the north. This is the existing gravel parking along Skyline. This will be paved, make it a little more accessible. Looking to the north back towards where Dinosaur Park area is, and looking to the south. And then this is the stone wall overlooked area. This, in this bend will be where the proposed parking will be constructed. You can see how, how straightening out that bend will probably help with traffic as well. Staff recommends that the final plan development be approved with the stipulations as noted in the staff report. I believe there are some interested members of the public wanting to speak on this, and hopefully we can answer their questions.
Kevin Atwater.
Good morning. I'm Kevin Atwater. I have the property that is directly north of the West Fulton proposed parking lot. Lived there my whole life. My mom still lives up there in the yellow house. I have my office right there, that I run my spraying business out of. I've hiked the hill my whole life. That's what the hill is for. I think that's one reason I haven't developed up above me. I own about an acre that's right next to this proposed parking lot, which is for sale, by the way. My main concern with this operation, I think, is that, is the water drainage. If you go up there and you look at it, it drains a huge area, a huge area. Two canyons come down, and they are aimed right at this parking lot. I have seen water come down this hill for years. At this point in time, up above the high-rise, they've let the grass grow. They're not mowing it anymore. And even with that three inches we had up there the other night, absolutely nothing comes down that hill and runs anywhere. The hillside soaks it up. If you put that parking lot right where you're going to put it, like I said, that whole area drains there. I don't know, you know, I know they do put containment on parking lots to control the water that falls on the parking lot, but, boy, you're talking, I don't know how many acres drain on this, right into where it's going to be. There again, I don't really have any objections to what's going on over there. Phil Olson, he owned it for almost twenty years. I can't tell you how many proposals he had and people that looked at it to wonder to, to do something with it, to build something. And I think it always kind of came down to a drainage issue or not having room to turn around with the fire, for the fire department. So it has just never been developed, and Phil finally sold it to whoever is, you know, doing the, the hillside thing. I, I, you know, another thing that kind of struck, strikes me as funny is that if you go up there and look at it, you'll see that it's just a thicket. I mean, it's just thick, and it just soaks up water like crazy. And it's quite pleasant to look at. There's fox dens up there and whatever, and I, and nobody ever hikes up there. I mean, when Phil put the sewer and water up the hill and paved it in front of my office, he, another thing, I lost my train of thought there. Another thing is there's no electricity there. There's no access. So if you're going to put, you know, little buildings in, the electricity has to be brought up all the way from down on Jackson Boulevard. West Fulton Street, in case anybody doesn't know, is not a city street. It's Penning County Housing Easement. I don't know if that makes any difference, but electricity would have to be brought up all the way from down at the alley, down toward, down by Jackson Boulevard. And Phil thought, when he developed it, he thought he had access to my property, and there is no easement for electricity from behind my office that goes up the hill. But there again, I, you know, I think everybody should look at it, and, and, boy, I'll tell you, you're going to have a water issue. It's going to come down that hill and fill up that parking lot like crazy. It's either going to jump the curb and go down with the high-rise, or it's going to have to be shot down the hill, which, of course, there's no storm sewers up there. So I guess my main concern is, is the water issue. I don't think that any water from this parking lot or the hillside would ever come into my building. It might if it shoots down the hill and comes around the corner. It's kind of aimed at me. But anyway, I think that, that, that's my main concern. that, that's my main concern. So, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Carol Rishel.
My name is Carol Rizdal. I live just to the east of the Petrified Forest Parking Lot. I've lived there for 18 years. We have four acres of park forest. I think it's a wonderful idea to open up the Skyline Wilderness. It certainly hasn't been used. It's sort of been nice to have it to ourselves, but it would be wonderful to share it with the public. I have two concerns, and I'm not sure this is so much in the building and the structure. But one is, having lived there for 18 years, we've had people who party up there in the parking area, and twice we've had some major issues. We had someone who got very drunk and rolled down the hill and broke her arm, and we found her in our yard the next morning. And then we had someone else who got very drunk several years ago in October at 3:00 in the morning and tried to break into our house. He said he was trying to get home to Sheridan Lake Road. So I'm concerned about having more people up there, and I don't know if there's been any addressing of more law enforcement or monitoring of the area. I'm afraid building with the parking areas now, more people might come in. So that was one concern. The other concern I have is dogs running loose. I've seen dogs chasing deer, chasing fox, and people think this is an area where they can walk their dogs on leash, and I, I see a lot. I have a dog. I've had dogs run into me. I walk with my dog on the leash. There's no sign up there that says dog must be leashed. I don't know if their sign is in any of the Skyline Wilderness. If there is, I haven't seen it. And so that would be something I would recommend, some type of notification that dogs do need to be on a leash. Those are my two concerns.
Thank you. Chris Gross.
Hi, good morning. It's Chris Gross. I'm Chris Gross, the general manager with KAVM Black Hills Fox TV. And we have approximately 10 acres kind of right in the middle of the proposed area. At first, I'm very excited to see some improvements coming to the Skyline Drive area. It's a very popular area. A lot of people take advantage of in our community. My biggest concern, though, with the development is not, not enough is going to be done to address the safety issue. I have approximately 45 employees, so we've, we've got a lot of people coming on and off Skyline Drive all throughout the day, news crews coming in and out, and I cannot tell you how many times that somebody has almost hit somebody coming around a curve, a walker, a bicyclist. They, they do not stay single file. They come out in the middle of the street. There's just a huge safety concern. In the mornings, there's a lot of fog up in that area. Visibility is very hard. And my biggest concern with this is that not enough is being done to address the safety. I like the idea of the improved walking trails and hopefully getting people to do that, but I really don't think locals are going to take a lot of advantage of that, the regular walkers that we see every single morning up there, the bikers up and down there every day. They enjoy being on the road. They enjoy going along that area. It's part of their normal routine, and I, I don't know if there's any way to direct traffic off of, or direct people off of that, or to get them onto the trails better, or to improve walking on the side of the road as part of the proposed project. I just have a very big concern that somebody is eventually going to get very hurt up there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Any other questions? Comments? I'd entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Oh, John?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two of the commenters addressed a question. One is drainage, and we have this in several other areas of our community. So I have some concern that hard surfacing some areas instead of using the aggregate as we have in a wildlife area, wilderness area, seems to me to be counterproductive. And I, and I worry about that rain coming down the hill and hard surfacing. I happen to live along the Sheridan Lake Road area, and all the development south on both sides of the road has really created a lot of drainage issues. And so every bit of hard surfacing we do contributes to that additional drainage problems. So I think the request that maybe we take a look at, at drainage. With regard to the safety on that, I don't know, for almost 30 years since I've lived here, we've enjoyed Skyline Drive, either driving it, haven't even hiked all the trails, hiked some of them. I, I'm sort of one of those people torn between leaving it in the state that it is for a natural environment, and the improvements, although I know would make it nicer, will lead to increased safety access considerations for those people that live in the area. So I guess probably I didn't think about this or try to get any additional information before this issue came up today, but I think the issues, two of those issues, if not all three of them, are serious enough. So I personally would like more information from the development of this project with regard to the safety and, and the drainage.
Thanks, John. Karen?
Thank you, and maybe the planning department is going to answer some of the questions that John and I have. I, I do want to know some more information about the drainage as far as the engineering is concerned and where that drainage will go if it's paved. And safety, as a lifelong resident of this area in Rapid City, I've been up Skyline Drive many, many times, and there's always a need for more parking of some kind because people want to look out and look over the area, even if they aren't hiking the trails. So I think having Skyline Drive, the improvements up there, I think, is an exciting idea, and I'm hoping that we can get all the issues resolved so that, that it will be what we all want to see up there. I was recently up there and noticed too that the plaque that's there for Hangman's Tree didn't look very good, so I'd like somebody to address that question. And the other comment that I have is, I just recently climbed M. Hill, and I noticed a lot of people. It was in the middle of the day on a weekday, so it wasn't like a weekend, and there was a lot of people I met coming and going. I even met a couple ladies that were coming down with a baby in a carriage, and I'm thinking, I struggled to get up there. I don't know how she managed to get up to the top of that hill, but it, it was well-used. And I can see this area being well-used also for hiking and stuff, but there is a lot of, there are a lot of people who, who do walk just on the, on the street, because I know some couples that do that. They go up and walk up to the top of the hill, and, and I don't know if anything's been addressed about a, a walking path. There's not much room up there, but something for people to walk on up there that would make it safer. So there's a lot of questions that I also have, so hopefully the, maybe Vicki or somebody from the planning side can answer some of those, or else we'll continue to get more information. So that's my comments.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
This project has been before the city's Park and Rec Board, and it's been well-vetted at that committee level. Many of the comments that have been shared today are the same concerns that staff has had. We also like the idea of the additional parking along Skyline Drive that does allow someone in area to get off of the street right of way, as we know it's, it's narrow anyway. And the trailheads then would either have direct access from that parking lot. In areas where there would be crossing on the street, there would be well-designated pedestrian access points. Unfortunately, we don't have someone from the Parks Department here today. Alex is, shame on him, on his honeymoon. So we were a little surprised today when we walked in and realized that he wasn't going to be here. We do have Ted Johnson here today, though, and he is the city's engineer that did review the drainage issues, and, and certainly that is something that we had concerns with too. And if you'd like, you can hear from Ted. My suggestion would be on this that in order to address all of these comments, and even to get some discussion from the Parks Department, not so much on this project, but just on the park's operational plan regarding dogs on leashes and how those are assigned, hours of operation for city parks, those kinds of things, it might be to our advantage to continue this for two weeks, and we've made notes of all the comments here today. Take them to the Parks Department so that they are prepared to come into the next meeting and fully answer the issues that have been identified.
Anyone else have questions or would desire to speak?
Motion to continue for two weeks?
Second. Tim made the motion to continue this item for two weeks, and Karen seconded it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passed. Just any discussion items?
I think we're good.
Okay. Any other items? If not, John?
Patsy still here?
Kip is.
I don't know the exact date, but I believe it's to be let any day now. It was to be let in early August. They're still doing design phase on, design in the second two phases. Design phase is completed on phase one. I imagine they will bump up the design schedule on fa, on the northern phase now, since that has been moved ahead in the program. That is correct, yes.
Can do aesthetically and in conjunction with that project?
That will be up to the Department of Transportation, since this is their road and their right-of-way. However, they should have more additional landowner meetings as they progress with the design phase for that northern phase of the construction.
Their initial indication was that that would be something that they would be able to approve in the construction. You don't think that'll be in conflict with the rest of the, I, I would assume there'll be others that would, would do the same thing.
Yeah, I know they're looking, I know they're looking at the properties on an individual basis as to the width of the right-of-way and the alignment, where the buildings are, things like that, to see how much room they have between the back of curb and, and the property line, and they will tailor those construction plans to each individual property.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, I am.
Any other comments? Questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion. Motion's been made to adjourn. Is there a second? Tim made the motion, Karen seconded the motion to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, say aye. Meeting adjourned.
What about those of us that oppose adjourning?
Thank you.